Blue Ridge, Ridge Gate, Jones, and Glover. No, yes Glover, I believe it is Glover. So those four, and that really helps build capacity at the entire level with the administration, the coaches, and the teachers. So that is kind of the next evolution that we're looking at. There are some edge, you know, components that could be helpful, and that's one thing we're going to consider moving forward, both at the elementary and possibly even at the secondary level.
Okay, I'm probably going to want a little more information about that because, you know, if we, if we did, if we created something and it worked, I don't understand why we're not using it at other camp, there are other campuses that struggle like, you know, I know flexible grouping and lots of things like that have been, you know, pretty successful. Our master mentor teacher model, I know, has been very successful, bringing in the additional physical aspects of it, I know, has been successful. So, we don't have to get into detail now, but I, I really want to know a little bit more about why we're not doing that, and if it's budget constraints, or whatever it is, you know, I have that question because I think that these, we built edge based on best practices. So, yes, did you have something?
I do want to interject. Joe and Deanna are not speaking up on this, but they are, because we were trying to be careful about it, because we don't, we've learned not to try to implement things quickly. But there are aspects of edge that they have been exploring, that we're, we're, there's some immediate things we need to do this year. And we're, and we're looking at what that would be, and we are going to provide the board a full update on that in the very near future.
Okay. Okay, well, I'll leave that alone for right now. And then, I had one other. I noticed that we're offering some, in our tier one instruction, I'm on page sixteen of the report, and we were offering at all campuses, some deep dive professional learning related to formative assessments, SPED, PBIS, and that type of thing. My question is, are we, if we're, if we're offering this deep dive professional learning, and specifically for special education, are we requiring it, offering it, or, and/or requiring it for all teachers? And this is a theme I've had for the last four years, since I've been on the board, about making sure that our general education teachers have access to that training, especially since we're doing co-teach, but because we are required by law to be educating our students in the least restrictive environment, which means the general education classroom, and if our general education teachers are not prepared, and that's not just, you know, kids at qualifying or SPED, but our 504 kids as well, then I think we're, you know, we're not doing our jobs. So, tell me about the offering and/or requirement of our regular education teachers in getting this deep dive professional learning in special education.
I'll start, and then Dina will go into the deep dive piece. This summer is part of the tiered instruction training for all teachers. We collaborated with Ms. Burns in special education, and teachers received training around how to accommodate and work with students who need either support because of a disability, or any student who needed to have like a scaffold learning experience. And so all teachers receive that as part of the seven hour tiered instruction training. This deep dive is specific to during the school year training, and I'll let Dina talk about that.
And, um, I think that's on. Hey, okay, push the button. So, the, I mean, really, this was the first year we did the tiered instruction, which was huge, because all general ed teachers got that foundational piece. We have not rolled out specific day-long training for, for general ed teachers regarding special education. One of the things that's a challenge in this district, and in any district, is finding the time to have general ed teachers do that. So we've done an approach this year twofold, is we did, first of all, we did, started with deeper dives with our administrators, because we know that we need to build capacity with our administrators and really help them understand fundamental things like, what is a FAP? What is, how, how do you do, you know, how do you implement an IEP? What are the case management systems? And so that's one piece, and we started that this summer, and we had some really good positive feedback from our principals about that. We're offering those again in the fall. And then we're also going to campuses after school, in fact, we have our first one this month, and working again with the special ed teachers first to build capacity with them on then how to take that and be leaders at the campus to turn around training. We, we just don't have the resources to provide training for every general ed teacher from the district level, the way that we need to. So the way we approach this is we build capacity in the special ed leaders at the campus, the administrators, and then we implement it that way.
Okay, I appreciate that, and, and I know that it, it can be a struggle to have the capacity to be able to do all of that with all of our teachers, and that we struggle with resources, but I'm going to say again that I think that this is critically important. I think it's something that the district needs to do, and because I think it helps all kids. It doesn't just help our special ed kids. Though, that type of training, we know it's going to help with RTI, with kids who are not, that are not identified SPED, it's going to help 504. I mean, we've got kids, if we're having kids take ownership of their learning, and we're going towards more individualized learning, this is going to be important. So I'm just going to reiterate that, that I think we need to have a push for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tosan, and Mrs. James.
Thank you, Mr. Verdine, and thank you to the presenters and for the presentation. There's a lot of good information there, and, and I appreciate all of your, your efforts in, in bringing it to us, and like giving us a chance to have a conversation about this. And I want to also say thank you to these principals for being here. I'm a little blocked out, and I can't see all of you, but I appreciate you and all your hard work on your campuses. And I agree with what Mrs. Tosan said, that we want to communicate with you and we want to support you, so please reach out to the staff when you have needs. You don't, you don't have to struggle in isolation, because we want to be a team and we want to be supportive. Okay, so, I want to comment on some of the things my colleagues said, and I kind of made a list here, so it's, won't be all that smooth, but hopefully. So, Mr. Rice, you mentioned about the community-based accountability system, and I absolutely understand your frustration in not having that available to us at the same time we're receiving letter grades for our campuses, because I remember that we, when we first started as a district talking about this, that was exactly the reason we wanted it, so that we could have something to counter those letters that get published in the newspaper. And so that's, that's a frustration, and the Vision and Planning Committee discussed that, and we brought that up with staff this week, and we talked about something we might, some ideas about what we might be able to do in the interim to give us those talking points. So we're absolutely on that. I don't know what that's going to look like, but the Vision and Planning Committee is going to work on it, and so thank you for bringing that up again, and just reiterating what we talked about in the Vision and Planning Committee. So I appreciate that. Another thing that I think is important in this labeling of campuses by grades conversation is that this is what the, I'm going to say this, try to say it in a nice way. This is what the state is focusing on the grades, okay? But there's another piece of it, and I'm not saying that we, I don't believe that we should, as Ms. Soffer said, I don't believe that we should validate that, but they've also given us the distinctions. So let's use that as a tool for our communication, because these are good things that are happening in a number of our campuses. And if they're going to give us good things and bad things to say, then, you know, we don't have to emphasize the bad, but we can certainly talk about the good. So if they're going to do that to us, then, then let's do that. I, I don't see anything wrong with that, because I agree with what my colleague said. This is one day, this is one set of data. I think this board and, and this staff is sophisticated enough to understand that. But it is what it is. Okay, so, I think we, I, I, I agree that we need to have those distinctions be, you know, be available and be publicly known. And if, if that's all we talk about is the distinctions, then let's talk about the distinctions. I'm fine with that. I also want to comment, because Mr. Rice brought up his, about the leveled literacy program and versus a reading recovery, and we still get some questions about that in the community, about the implementation of that program. And when we see STAR accountability scores in reading and writing that don't look that good, then we wonder, is the pro, is the new program we put in being effective? And I think that's what Mr. Rice is trying to say. And Mrs. Williams, I heard what you said, eighty-eight percent are moving out of the program and not having to re-enter it in the next year, and that's excellent results, and yes, it's impacting a larger variety of grades, but we really need some numbers about number of students being impacted, not just percentages, so that we can say, this is how this is helping. Because I understand exactly what you're getting at, Mr. Rice. We're still getting asked about everybody's favorite program, reading recovery. That was effective in our district, but not effective for as many kids, so please help us with the numbers. I'll just also comment on something Mrs. Tosan said about, about Edge, and how it was very effective at Briar Gate instantly, and has continued to be effective. So the pieces of it that we're talking, that staff is talking about implementing, I hope there'll be some analysis of what, what things are working, what have, what's worked at Briar Gate, what's worked at Ridgemont, because those are some tools that these principals sitting over here might want to know about and be able to use, and on this other long list of twenty-five campuses or whatever it is, maybe there's some pieces that can be used there, too. And I don't know, I don't know what that is, and that's for you guys to work out, but if we have something that's helping kids, then let's not reinvent the wheel. Let's do, let's keep, let's do it, let's do it some other places. And one of the things that I know, I believe this board really liked about Edge, is really student-centered. It talked about some really basic things, like making sure kids had food, like making sure kids had exercise, like making sure kids were equipped with some of the real basic things in their lives to, to help them to feel, so that they could be successful at school. That was some of the, the basics of it. And the, and those first teachers and, and staff who started in at those campuses really focused on that as a, as a, as a, you know, ground zero. Yes, the, the training and the specialties, that comes all layered in, and, and your nice chart that had all the wheels on it, you've got all that stuff there, and you did a very detailed explanation of all the interventions and all the things that are going on, and that's, and that's good, and that's part of Fort Bend ISD. But we're talking about some, maybe some more basic needs that need to be met, so that's enough of my soapbox, but let's not reinvent the wheel unless we need to. One other comment on STAR, I heard some comments, and this was, I heard the comments about growth is critical for every student, and I believe that is true in Fort Bend. We expect, this board, and, and I think hopefully everyone who works in Fort Bend ISD, and those of us who volunteer, expect students to make growth every year, and we expect them to make a year's worth of growth. And we're hopefully targeting that, and we're targeting higher than that, so that we can help kids meet high expectations. And it shouldn't matter how we slice, dice, mix up, analyze, or any of that, the data, or how the state does. If there's new sub-populations, if there's new student groups they're going to analyze, any of that, that shouldn't matter to us, because we should care about every student making that growth. So, let's not worry about, I mean, the student groups help us to analyze the data, right? But they shouldn't necessarily help us to care more about any one particular student. And I guess that's my point. Okay, I have a couple of questions. One of my questions, or one of my, this is again a comment, on slide fifteen, Ms. Saavedra, this is a chart that you showed of the Texas data that talked about all the school districts plotted there, and I guess one of the things that I think about when I looked at this line is, or this graph, is that the, the schools, or the districts in this case, I guess, that are in the upper right quadrant of this graph are actually high percentage of economically disadvantaged schools, but yet they are high performing. So my question to our staff is, what are the school districts that have high percentage of economically disadvantaged students, but yet are high performing in the As? What are they doing? And how do we find that out? If we look closer to home and look at our own data, on the next slide, I think, because I'm not sure mine's are numbered, or the staples where the numbers are, let's look at home. We've got some in the upper right, a cou, a couple in the upper right quadrant there, where we've got, you know, greater than sixty percent economically disadvantaged, but yet eighty or above in the, in the overall score. So what are we doing at those places? And we might be able to look, those are elementary schools, and maybe the same is true in the other places, but I'm, I'm just pointing that out. That's how I look at those charts, and, you know, let's, let's, let's learn from that. All right. On slide thirteen, I know so far I'm just talking, not asking any questions, but here comes a question. Watch for it. I guess, Dr. Rice, this question is for you, because I, I heard what you said about on these, well, first of all, I'm very happy about Ridgemont Elementary not being an IR, and thank you for your, all your hard work, and, and Mrs. Houston and her staff, and all her hard work in, in making that happen this year. I know they were very close last year, and I know they're very happy this year, so, so thank you for that. Those bottom two boxes, though, you talked about them being in some type of categories, which I didn't quite understand. You talked about maybe there were going to be turnaround plans, but we didn't need to worry about them, because they weren't going to come to the board, and I don't really understand the difference between those two boxes, and I'm not, could you just review that for us one more time, please?
Yes, ma'am. So, because we are a Harvey district, since we missed at least ten days of school due to Harvey, any campuses that did not meet standard are officially rated as not rated, and so that's the bottom box to the left, Glover, Hunter's Glen, Lantern Lane, and McCullough. And so that's under the state accountability. And then the bottom box on the right is the continuous comprehensive improvement and support, and that is due to federal accountability, that if campuses are at a certain tier at the bottom, then they are considered comprehensive, and that's very similar to the priority and focus labels from last year, under the federal accountability system.
Okay, and then, so then my follow-up would be, on the next slide, what is the additional targeted support schools? That's another category, that's the next category of, they're on the watch list?
That's, that's one way to put it. It is a, it's a new category by name, but it's very similar in past years under not meaning adequate yearly progress, and also known as, uh, system safeguards, not meaning those in the past. And so that is, if they don't meet the minimum for one, at least one specific student group, then they automatically are, in the past was called a system safeguard, but now they're an additional targeted support school.
Okay, and was there a, and maybe you've already provided this information to us, and I haven't seen it or read it, but was there any kind of correlation around these system safeguards? I remember looking at it last year, and there were certain system safeguards, maybe in the SPED areas, that we were missing over and over, but what, was there any patterns in that?
I'm going to have Dr. Rice speak to that, just from accountability perspective.
We are seeing some similar patterns, we're still in the process of assessing, but what we've seen so far is that some of the same areas that the district was concerned about with our ten, for example, math growth is showing up also in the campus data. But we're asking every campus to assess which groups miss their targets and what the patterns are, because it could be centered around a subject, or it could be centered around a particular group or program. And so we're asking every one of them to analyze this data with their study of their comprehensive needs assessment and the writing of their campus improvement goals. So you should see that show up in the performance objectives.
Okay, good, well, we'll, we'll be looking for that, because the thing that jumps out at me on this piece, on this, on that box right there, is seven of our eleven high schools are listed there, which is somewhat concerning. So, I'll be interested to learn more about that when I read those campus improvement plans, so thank you. All right. I have another question on, well, I guess it's slide four, and that, on the, on domain three, closing the achievement gaps, is this score developed by comparing, I understand why we're in eighty-nine and out of ninety-five, which I agree, Mr. Rice, is somewhat unfair. Is this determined based on comparing us to other schools, or other districts, or is this domain number based on our scores within, well, I don't know what it's based on, so I'm not going to guess.
So, in domain three, there are about four different categories with different weights that play into the system. Some of it is based on passing rate, some of it's based on growth rate, some of it's based on the individual targets for each of the student groups, and then also our college career and military readiness indicators. So it's hard to say that it just comes from averaging, for example, and I think that's the mistake sometimes people might make under this new ADEF system, is that you look at that number and you think maybe that's just an average, but it's not. This, this number actually comes from a very complex, complicated set of elements and formulas to arrive at that number. But it does, domain three does take into consideration our performance in domain one and domain two, in order to assess each of our student groups against the federal indicators, and those are our performance targets, which accumulates into a score. I could put a big old mathematical.
No, I don't really want that. I, I just, I'm just going to point out that in the, in the effort to make this so simple, they've made it incredibly complicated. I could look at this data five years ago and tell if we were closing achievement gaps or not, and we weren't, and I could look at it last year and tell, too, this, this doesn't help me. Okay, so, we, we obviously need to look at this data a little bit differently in order to understand our progress in this area. So, no thank you to the state, and I'll be sure to tell my state reps how unhelpful this system is, and they're spending a lot of money on it, and it doesn't, it doesn't, doesn't help us very much. And then just for clarification, for those that are following along at home, the scores that you put up there in like slides five through nine, or whatever the numbers were, those are kind of mashing all the grades together, three through eight, kind of thing, so if, that's just district-wide, all grades mashed together.
Summed across grades three through eight in high school EOCs.
Okay, and that's, that brings up a good point. So one of the, the measurements I know is high school academic growth. Well, how do we measure academic growth in a high school, let's just say in math, when we're only testing one subject one year?
So the way that that currently works is that the growth for ELA is determined by progress from English one to English two, separated from eighth grade, because the change, the test changes substantially in terms of integration of reading and writing in English one and two, therefore they can't compare those scores. But they do complete, compare one to two to assess growth, and that pretty much pertains to all of our high school students, unless they completed English one in middle school. With math, it's even more complex, in that we have a large number of our students, in fact, just over two thousand students took the Algebra I EOC this past year in middle school, and therefore they have no way to factor a growth indicator in for high school for those students. However, what the state is currently considering recommending to the legislature is that we be required to administer the ACT or the SAT to each one of those students who took Algebra I in middle school, and mandate that, an unfunded mandate to administer at about fifty dollars per student, which we estimated today is between a hundred and a hundred and five thousand dollars per year to administer. Not that administering ACT or SAT is a bad thing, we certainly want to increase our CCMR indicators, but how do we pay for it from year to year?
Right, okay, so, really, what they're saying is that they're trying to measure something that they don't, they can't really measure, and then they're penalizing the, us for the kids who are accelerated in their learning and actually want to take calculus while they're in high school, which is a really smart thing to do. In fact, some school systems, one that I'm quite familiar with in Boston, Massachusetts, has restructured their whole math program so that all students have access to the algebra curriculum in eighth grade, every single one of them, because they know that's the only way they can have access to the calculus curriculum in high school. So they've restructured their math curriculum so that seventh and eighth grade and algebra is all taught in a two-year, in two-year period, and then all kids have access to the algebra curriculum. So, I'll try not, it's, it's disappointing that our state is so behind in having the sense that kids, it, it benefits students to have, to have access to the, to the, to the algebra curriculum in eighth grade, and that we, as a district, and get penalized for that, and, and here comes all, whole, whole bunch of avalanche of events that put burdens on us as a district and on those students, and just, that type of thing is ridiculous. Okay, well, all right, well, thank you very much, thank you for answering my questions, and thank you, Mr. Verdine, for the time.
Thank you, Mrs. James, Mr. Rosenthal, you have a comment?
I'll be brief. I just want to clarify what you just said. So at high school, basically, there's an English test, and that's what goes into all these, this, what, domain one, or one and two?
So for high schools, it's based on English one to English two growth in domain two performance, and anywhere growth is factored in. Otherwise, it's straight passing performance on each independent, and of course, exam. The difficulty really falls in, in the math area, with having two tests to be able to assess growth between at the high school level. There have been discussions over the years under prior accountability systems about replicating the middle school score in high school, and the problems with that being associated with the high school versus the middle school that gave it, you know, those sorts of things. But the federal government is really requiring that we at least have two tests in ELA and in math at the high school level, it's just Texas is not settled on what that looks like. So their solution, proposed solution right now seems to be centered around ACT and SAT as a way to assess a performance at the high school level for the population of students who are taking algebra early.
So, so would that mean that a kid, if, if they took algebra in eighth grade, or even ninth grade, the following year they would have to take ACT or SAT, and then the following year they would measure, they would have to do it again, and they would measure that growth? Because otherwise, it's, doesn't make sense.
Based on what's being recommended, they wouldn't have to keep repeating it, it would just be at least one.
Then why, why even do it? That makes no sense. If they're looking, if you're looking for growth, you got to have at least two points to compare.
And the EOCs are not aligned with ACT.
And, and so, and, so the other thing that's going into that at the high school level is the passing on the five EOCs?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, and so, one, one other question is, when you're talking about measuring growth, how does that work for, for, you know, kids who are already mastering the STAR at, I don't know, say, sixth grade? Does that mean they have to master it in seventh grade, and eighth grade, too, so if they slip up, you know, the whole school gets dinged?
Yes, sir. Basically, there's a chart in domain two A that assesses a certain number of points based on how much growth the student made. If they don't make a year's worth of growth, then generally that means we receive zero points. If they make just enough growth, that's a half point, and if they make more than enough growth, that's a full point for the student. So it's basically moving up performance categories for most students, so if I'm an approaches grade level student, the next year I should be in the meets area. However, if I'm a master student, I can't really on the test make a year's worth of growth in scale score, so the premise for them is that they have to remain at the same standard, or potentially one question more if they were near the top, but not right at the top.
Okay, so they actually look at number of items correct from year to year?
They use that in determining the scale score. So different items are weighted different amounts to play into that scale score, but basically that's the difference.
Okay, so, so if a kid, what is it? Okay, so, so if a kid, what is it? I'm, I'm trying to remember now. Is it eighty-five percent for mastery or something like that? Is that what the?
It, it varies according to what the scale scores are for each of the tests.
Okay. So let's just say it's eighty-five percent. So if the kid gets eighty-eight percent the next year, you're getting credit for growth?
As long as they're maintaining or increasing.
Okay, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal and Mrs. James.
That sounds like a statistically impossible thing to keep up. I'm just saying, you can't continue to grow and grow and grow and grow and grow because you're, I mean, even if I took the same math test, I mean, if I, if I take the same thing, I might get an eighty-five one time and an eighty-eight the next time. And if I take it a third time and get an eighty-five, it doesn't mean that I don't know the material any better than I did last time, but.
Right. Or if you get a ninety-five the first time and you get a ninety-four the second time, I mean, so you're getting dinged.
Right. So I have a question. Does the, has the state considered at all the concept of instead of testing every single child, but doing a statistically representative sampling of students so that we could monitor growth and, and have, be held accountable that way?
I can tell you, having served on the ATAC committee for a few years, that that has been a point of discussion several times. The state has not bought into it, but it has definitely been a point of discussion and a recommendation to look at research-based processes for random sampling.
Thank you, Mrs. James. I wanted to make a comment. I'm also interested in, this was mentioned a few times, about what pieces of the Edge model that we can use and, and continue to use a successful pieces of the Edge model. So I'm, I'm interested in hearing more about that. And then my question is, in regards to closing the gaps, how do we create realistic goals when we have some schools with relatively high mobility rates? And does the state take that into consideration in regards to grading our schools?
So currently, mobility per campus does not factor in to the way that the grades are assessed. We did take a quick look at the mobility factor for each of the four schools that are not rated right now. And they do have a much higher mobility rate than the district rate, ranging anywhere from about fifteen percent to just under twenty-five percent. The district percent is just under twelve percent. And that's pretty steady for the district. The way that, the way TEA has tried to get at that information, and it's not a direct comparison, but they have two new groups in the, the student groups within domain three that are centered around being continuously enrolled or non-continuously enrolled. However, for a campus, that doesn't help much because if the student's been continuously enrolled in the district, it still counts as continuously enrolled even though they may not have been at that campus for three or more years. So it doesn't have a true comparison to the mobility rate. But certainly that's something we think about when we're talking about what instructional supports a student needs and, you know, where the gaps may lie because of moving.
Did you, did I hear you say fifteen to twenty-five percent mobility rate? Wow. That's incredible. Okay, well, I wanted to thank my board members for the comments and the questions. I also wanted to, again, thank the principals that are here and let you know we do support you. And we're in the journey together. And thanks again for the presentation. We will now convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551, in those sections listed in the agenda and for the purpose of private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subject matters authorized by law. We are now convening in closed session.